Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone. Swan County Board of County Commissioners meeting of September the 21st, 2021 at 5:00 PM. This evening, if you please stand for our invocation and our pledge led by Commissioner Hale.
Everybody, please bow your heads. Lord, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to gather to do the work in Swan County. Lord, we want to say thank you for your forgiveness, for your grace. Lord, we pray you'll watch over all these families and folks that we all recognize and mention. And there's a lot that we don't. You know who they are. You know that you need to put your arms and hands around them. We pray that you'll do so. Protect our nation. Lord, watch over us through this meeting. Bless us, forgive us our sins. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Hale. At this time, our first order of business this evening is approval of amendments from our September 2nd, 2021 special call meeting and our September 9th, 2021 tentative budget hearing. Do I have any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Land?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving ahead to our consent agenda, we have items two through 16. I have, I'm going to pull item 16. Do I have any other questions or comments on any other items at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve items two through 15?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Land?
That was White.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner White.
But I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, item 16, Commissioner Land.
Oh, I was just gonna, had a couple people that are here tonight ask me the question, and I didn't know the answer to it myself, so I was going to ask Mr. Harris. It just came up. On the warranty section, Mr. Harris, could you tell the public what we're getting there? It says on page, I think, page two of 13, under item number three, that there is no warranties between the LEC and the LESOR. Is that, Caterpillar still, I'm assuming, warranting these motor graders with some type of warranty?
They are.
Yeah.
They, they're definitely under warranty.
Okay.
I mean, I see that they say that they're not the manufacturer and on and on and on, but they come out and had all the warranty work on those things.
Mr. Pravat was mumbling something.
Well, I wasn't mumbling.
Oh, wanted to say something.
I was going to say something that, to back that up, I mean, as part of the warranty on it, because it's the LEC, it's a different entity, you get the manufacturer's warranty, which behind it, instead of just being straight from the LEC.
Fair enough for me.
That's all.
I got it.
I think it's the last sentence, lessor assigns to LEC its interest in the manufacturer's warranties.
That's under the addendum that we also included in the contract.
Any other questions on this item?
No.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fleming?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving ahead to item 17. We got just a, we got a minute or two here before 5:05, so I'm going to skip ahead to item 18. I have a real quick discussion I wanted to have. Had a company that operates here in Swan County reach out to me and, and just wanted me to make folks aware. Gentlemen, I've gave y'all a, a copy of, it's called Employee Retention Credit Program. Basically what it is, I'm going to read real quick from the IRS.gov website. The employee retention credit is a refundable tax credit against certain employment taxes equal to 50% of the qualified wages an eligible employer pays to employees after March 12th, 2020, and before January 1st, 2021. Eligible employees can get immediate access to the credit by reducing employment tax deposits that are otherwise, that they are required to make. Also, if the employer's employment tax deposits are not sufficient to cover the credit, the employer may get an advance payment from the IRS. And also, it, it, basically, it's a way for you to keep your employees. It gives, it gives back to the employer. So if you have employees, it's worth looking into to get some tax credit and tax relief there during this time of COVID. Basically, it was rolled into law for that. I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. I have some extra copies if there is anyone here this evening that would like to see that. And also, you can just look it up on, as I said, IRS.gov and Employee Retention Credits. Now moving back to item number 17. At 5:05 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance pertaining to LDR 21-03, an application by Charles Garrett, or Charles Jacob Garrett, to amend the official zoning atlas of Swan County by changing the zoning designation from agricultural A1 to commercial neighborhood CN. At this time, before we start, we will open the public hearing, and I will turn it over to Mr. Pravat if we have anyone wishing to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If anybody does anticipate they may speak on this item, would you please stand and be sworn? Seeing none, please, just in case, if you're not sure, go ahead, just in case. Okay? Do each of you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Again, if you do come up, please state your name and address for the record whenever you approach the podium. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. At this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Meeks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, the application and request that you have before you tonight is a ordinance, proposed ordinance concerning a LDR amendment number 21-03, which would be concerning a rezoning request to change the zoning designation for a described one acre parcel of property from agricultural one to commercial neighborhood. The property is located in Section 24 Township 6 South, Range 14 East. This is probably about a, I'd say about a quarter, quarter, a half a mile from south on 129, from the intersection of 129 and 27. So you're just south of where 49 intersects with 27. You cross over, 129 picks up heading towards Gilchrist. So it's about a quarter to a half mile on your right-hand side of the road is a, is a, an older building that I believe had previously been used as a, as a feed store at some point in time, probably 20-some years ago. The Garrets are the owners of the property, and they currently farm the land around it and had started a, a business that they call the Farm Stand. They had been selling produce and different items there that they grow on the property, so there was never any zoning issues, you know, related to that. In doing that, they, they started doing some food preparation for some of their workers, and then that kind of ventured into selling some food items to the public, which would necessitate a zoning change and amend that to commercial neighborhood. It would allow them to continue to do their business that they're doing on the property. The food preparation that's done onsite is not a sit-down style restaurant. It's a stop-in, pick-up, kind of go and take-to-go, and that's the way it's been operating. So we've, we told them in order to make everything across the board compliant, probably necessitate a zoning change to neighborhood commercial, which would allow those types of activities, and it would also allow them to continue to sell the produce and stuff that they grow onsite. They also have some, they, they locally sourced honey that they sell onsite. They make their own salsa, and they make their own tortillas. It's actually pretty interesting to look at if you down that way. But they've been working with Patrick Taylor, our building official, on their permits and everything for the inside. And also, Tim White has been there doing some inspection stuff for their hood vent stuff. They've secured and, and gotten their restaurant license that they need through the state of Florida, so this is just one of those steps in, in the process. So you have a proposed ordinance before you deny to approve or deny the request to change the zoning designation to neighborhood commercial. You don't have any questions of me. Ms. Garrett is present. If you have any questions of her and how they operate their business, she can answer those. If not, I'll enter the file into the record at this time.
Do I have any questions for Mr. Meeks? From the board?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none. Mr. Pravat?
I just will accept the file in as composite exhibit one for the record.
I'll just add to the record in that the application went before our planning and zoning board at their last month's meeting, and their recommendation to the board was for approval. So that would be part of the record as well.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. At this time, I'll open the floor to public comment. Do I have anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. This time, we'll have board discussion. Only thing I would add is I know where Mr. Meeks is referring to. Very neat little spot there. Well, taken care of. I think it's welcome addition to our community. Do I have any other discussion from the board?
Pretty good tacos.
Yeah.
Yep. I don't have any problem. I think it's pretty cool that they're producing the vegetables and the produce, you know, here right next door and bringing them to market, so to speak, right there on the same property. I'm, I'm good.
At this time, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
He's in that district, so I'll second it.
I had to cut you off, Mr. Pravat, sorry.
Commissioner Fleming, you're getting a little slow on the draw there, that old age. I have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five vote. Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close public hearing. Moving ahead to item number 19, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, when I initially put this on the agenda or listed it a couple weeks ago, I thought I would talk more about options, but now I'm not in a position to do that because I've got a few commissioners that are meeting and talking with different entities outside the county, and I don't want to jeopardize any of those conversations that are not completed yet. So suffice it to say that we are actively involved in evaluating a number of different options that we'll eventually bring back to the board for consideration, and I think it's prudent that we just keep the public informed that we're working on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Item number 20, Mr. Harris.
Number 20, I had circulated appraisals previously. This is a follow-up on that. You've got three properties on here. You've got the appraisals, and I'm asking if y'all would like to establish the asking prices on these properties before we send them over to the real estate company to begin advertising those. And I'll just say, for those that may not be aware, we had selected a real estate company through the RFQ or RFP process previously, so that's behind us. We just need to start sending some properties to them.
This time, I have comments from the board. Mr. Land?
No, not really, but I'll say something. I'm good with, with moving forward and getting, getting these parcels on the market sooner than later at the appraise. Just put them on the market at appraised value, and we'll negotiate any offers or contracts that come in at the time that are, are below the ass price. Is that what we need, Mr. Pravat?
Yes, sir.
I'm good with the.
You don't want to increase any of these? I mean.
No, let's get them sold.
Okay.
You guys, you got, I mean, you got a recommendation, something you want to increase the price on?
Well, you've got one there for $12,000, and I haven't seen anything. If you get online and search, you're not going to find anything, a mobile home for $12,000 anywhere.
Well, I think it was in a.
That needs some work. It's, oh, it's in bad shape.
I mean, it needs to be gutted from the images that I looked at.
If y'all want to go with these numbers, that's fine.
I mean, what number, what number did you have in mind?
Oh, I don't have a number. I'm just telling you, I've, I looked online at quite a few, and I couldn't find anything that low.
My, my problem with going above the appraise appraisal is that if the buyer needs financing, the bank's going to hire a different appraiser to go out there, and he's going to be looking at, I mean, they're going to come back to us and say, you want 20? It only appraises for 12. Now, I know every appraiser may be within 5% of each other based on the comps and the whatnot that they give, adjustments made, but, I mean, that's, that's up to the, to the board. I mean.
Is there any others that stood out to you, Mr. Harris, that you?
No, we've had some conversation about that one on 51, but, I mean, it, I'm fine with all of them. I just thought that one was one specifically that was much lower than anything I could find online.
I, I was just looking at the images, and it looks like it needs everything.
But it is right down from the football field.
Yeah. Yeah, the one for 12.
Yeah. That lot is not far from.
We're going to have to call the sheriff's department because I'm afraid we're going to have people racing to the real estate office to tie that one up in a contract.
Well, I mean, you want to put 25,000 on it?
I do.
Okay.
I mean, we can always.
We always come down.
Negotiate, yeah.
We don't get any activity in 90 days, start doing price reductions.
All right, so we'll do that one at 25.
Any others, Commissioner White?
I'm good with the rest of them.
All right, gentlemen, we have that one item changed to 25,000. Seeing that, everyone, we have consensus, everyone's fine with moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Is that all you need, Mr.?
We'll take care of it.
Yes, sir.
That's the one on 85th Lane for the record, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
At this time, moving ahead to additional agenda items. Mr. Harris?
You, the first one is some furnishings in the EOC. We've got a backup. I'm going to say this in layman's terms instead of using their jargon. Essentially, we've got a backup location for dispatch if we had an emergency, and the other one was shut down, that's downtown. So there's some furnishings that were requested. That can be funded in part from 911 revenues, and this would be purchased under a state contract. So this is a request to allocate $7,349.10 for that purpose.
I have any questions for Mr. Harris, or I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hale?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Harris, item number two?
Number two is a couple of ventilator systems for our ambulances and the amount of $37,400. This is again off of a competitively bid contract, and that would be funded from the EMS contingency budget.
I have any questions on this item, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve as written?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fleming?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three, discuss flying communities. Commissioner Land?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, Mr. Harris, Mr. Pravat and I have had numerous conversations about this. I had an issue come up in a community that is a airpark community in my district with the HOA Association there, and the, it's been an ongoing issue for years and years and years with them. I forget the year, but I want to say it was in the 70s, Mr. Pravat. Am I right?
79.
79. The property was platted and subdivided, and in that plat, the roads and all the easements were, were given to the county. So they're county roads. The three particular roads in question are all dead end cul-de-sacs. Well, Mr. Pravat, if I say anything wrong, correct me, but Florida stat, Florida statute restricts airplanes from being taxiing on public roads. Well, we own the roads. They bought the lots as a flying community. There are some lot owners that live on the other side of our road, so they have to drive either down or across our county road to get to the airstrip in which they've built their home or whatnot. So in talking to Mr. Pravat, we need a consensus or some type of agreement from the board, not just me, to try to come up with a resolution or an ordinance to. Our idea was to do like a, like an application per subdivision that specifically names the roads in which would come to the county for review to approve these airplanes to travel either down or across our county road. I mean, they've been doing it. We just haven't been enforcing it. I mean, that's, it was developed as a flying community. The lots were sold as a flying community. They gave us the roads in 79. So we gotta, you know, if we, if we start enforcing it, we'll, you know, you got airplanes that can't get to the airstrip now.
So you're saying that they're, they're wanting to get to the, to the airstrip or?
Yeah, they have, they own, let's just say they own a home and an hangar, and it's across the, it's across the road, our road, from the actual airstrip. So they're having to drive their airplane, not fly it, drive it.
Drive it, taxi it.
Taxi it, is what they call it, a mother aviation guy, but taxi it across our road, then down our, we own the easements that go across other lot owners that own lots on the actual airstrip. So they're driving down our road, turning onto the easement to get to the airstrip to actually take off.
That would be kind of dangerous.
Are, are we maintaining these roads, or are they just grass roads?
No, the roads.
They got 911 address?
Yes. They're all 911 address roads. They're all public roads. We are maintaining them. In the language that Mr. Pravat and I had talked about, not increasing any, any maintenance expectation. We, our only expectation would be to maintain the road for motorized vehicle use, anything aircraft, you know, so the board's not under any additional liability if we were to. I'm not saying we need to do this, this is, this is up to you, the five of us, but we got an issue there where it's kind of, it's against the law. They've been doing it. We accepted the roads. They're not supposed to be driving down them or on them or across them, but it was an airpark, so.
Why all of a sudden now we, we worrying about it?
Back to that old kick the can scenario. I think that.
This issue's been around for a long.
It's been around for a very long time. They have, they, they named, they went back.
The commissioner.
Yes. They, they went back multiple, multiple, multiple.
We, we told them there would be two new commissioners one day that would fix this for them.
So we get handed a lot of that here.
I'm not familiar with, so I'll ask you. So they're, they're dead end. They go down the cul-de-sacs. How long are each one of these?
One of them is probably got five houses on it, it's less than a quarter of a mile maybe, and the other one's probably, Mr. Pravat, maybe a half a mile, and the other one is maybe three quarters of a mile.
Do you know, are they doing any maintenance of their own, like dragging?
I think that there's a couple of the guys that are kind of dragging the road a little bit if we don't make it around in what they consider a reasonable amount of time based on rainfall or whatnot. But they, they're not asking for us to, to come in there and make the, make the roads, you know, safe for airplane travel. We just need to continue to maintain them the way that we haven't always done, but they're, they're breaking the law, and they're like, we're tired of breaking the law.
Well, my only question is, as a, from a liability standpoint for the county, were we liable then? Are we more liable now if we do this? I mean, that's my only question on the whole thing.
Not if we go ahead and, and designate it as an airplane road. That's why we want to know what it is. They have to come in, make an application so that y'all will know what road it is specifically, have an application, and you can then dedicate that particular road for air travel. In addition to just having that permit, what we were going to do, though, is set rules for, you know, being able to taxi it on there, you know, having a flagman out there, having, you know, only doing it during certain times, you know. That add additional rules to go along with it to keep the safety factor way down.
Yeah, I mean, that's the biggest thing I would be concerned of is the liability standpoint. I mean, if you got a, if we say it's okay, it's fine to drive or taxi a airplane down a county road, and you got a car coming in the car, thanks that the airplane don't need to be on the road, and they run into each other, and we said it was fine to drive planes down the road, then.
Right. That was my only thought, but I mean, I guess they've been doing it since 79. I don't guess nobody's done it yet, so.
Sounds like we're getting along.
Oh, no, that's, that's where the problem.
That's where the problem is, they're not getting.
The problem, the problem is in the last few years, somebody by the name of Hatfield moved in on the end of one of those roads.
There's not an aviation enthusiast.
And, and the McCoys don't much care for.
No, the, the Hat, the, the Hatfield moved in, and the, the McCoys, apparently, they don't get along very well, and the Hatfields are aviation, but they are on the other side, so they're saying, hey, you're breaking the law.
I got you.
So it's, it's kind of a blessing in disguise type, well, we've been fighting this forever, so now they're kind of on the same team, saying, let's, let's get this resolved.
And in fairness, both to Hatfield and the McCoys, there are a couple other situations that are similar to this, you know, out there. Most of our flying communities are private roads, private everything subdivisions, but there are some still out there that are not, and they were also prior to this time, so.
I'm, I mean, I'm fine with supporting it where they can do it legally. I just want us, liability-wise, to be clear on whether it needs to be additional signage when we take a road and entertain it, whatever needs to happen.
That'll be part of the permit process. Once y'all designate it, we'll come up with the signs, you know, on there, and then we'll have additional rules, you know, that if they go on there, they have to, like I said, with a flagman, you know, have appropriate lighting. You, I kind of looked them up, a bunch of rules that have to do with, you know, literally taxing, you know, on an air, on an airstrip, and with the rules that they have, and then, you know, for their ride away rules between, in airports, you know, ride away rules between cars and vehicles and car, and, I mean, cars and planes, and planes and planes. So we'll just have a rule sheet about that, and then if anybody violates the rule sheet, then they'll be, you know, subject to getting a ticket and other things too, so.
So we're saying that we're doing it on a, on a per-road basis, though? It's not a blanket permit that we're doing.
Yes, sir, a per-road basis. That way, we know exactly where it is, you know.
Yeah. Our idea was like an application, like a hundred dollar or 50 dollar, 100 dollar minimal fee just to cover the county's expense to go out there and actually inspect. Okay, yeah, these roads are all kind of dead end cul-de-sacs. They've been here forever. Some type of application fee, but only application named the specific roads for in which the permit would be issued. So it's not like saying, well, yeah, you can, I can land a plane on my road now. No, 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 no. Just specifically named roads inside the aviation community.
With specific rules.
With specific rules.
Yeah, and you won't be able to taxi and take off on the road. That's not, that's not part of it.
No.
You know, it's just a matter of getting from point A to point B to, to the strip.
Yeah, with no increased, you know, no increased cost on our end, no, no increased expectation of maintenance or, or, you know, from us, or no increased liability from us.
What about the signs? Is that going to be county provided, or is that going to be?
Well, if you make the, if you make the fee high enough, you can cover the signs. And that, you know, I mean, that's a consideration.
I mean.
What we, what we were just basically doing is finding out whether or not it was something that y'all would be interested in and whether to, you know, to move forward with it or not. We will, we'll have to bring it back to you for ordinance adoption and the rules adoption then by resolution after that.
I'm good with that. I'm good with you putting together what you feel is, and then letting us review it. Then if we agree with it, or if we want to make changes to what Mr. Pravat's done or make additions, we can do that. And then at that point in time, once that's approved, then your customer can come fill one out.
Fill an application out.
Right.
We'd have a process in place, so to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm, I agree with that. I, you know, I'd rather see, I'd rather that would be legal than that, Commissioner Land said, someone may want to say, well, let me get my airplane and fly it out there too, you know? So I'd rather be, rather be legal than illegal.
Do you want consensus? I'm sorry, Mr.
No, we're good.
Do you want consensus, or do you want a motion?
No, consensus will be fine just to move forward because then we'll need the motion and stuff to adopt whatever it is that we do review and agree on.
Just one question. I mean, I, I think one of you guys said there may be more than just this one airstrip or, or airpark that we have. I mean, do we need to identify those and address?
No, sir. What we'll do is make a general policy.
Okay.
And then, when those folks will then have to come in and have that place designated or declared, you know? And if they don't, then they're still subject to being, you know, getting a ticket or whatever, you know, when they go out there, you know? But it's a process for them to identify for us.
How many parks do we have roughly? Does anyone know?
I'm not sure. Ron, did he just leave?
He's gone. He dipped out. He's gone, he dipped out.
Okay, well, I mean, there's approximately seven out there, I mean, that I'm aware of, and four of them have dedicated streets, some of them, I mean, county dedicated streets.
Yes, sir. At this time, I believe you have, I speak for the board, you have consensus to move forward.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, trying to quit kicking the can.
At this time, Sheriff St. John, will you come up for just a second, I've got a couple of quick questions for you. Myself and Mr. Harris, and also I've had a conversation with Mr. Pravat, we've been discussing more on the internet cafes, and I just wanted, are you working on that?
Yes, sir, yeah, I mean, we are, I mean, I, I mean, I can talk to you, not that I won't, the stuff we're gonna do, we'd rather, you know, have an open discussion about, but to answer your question, yes, we are.
No, that's fine, I just, I wanna, I just have people from the public that's still concerned about it, and I still feel the same as I did before when we discussed it, I don't know how the other board members feel, but, uh, those things aren't in Brantford, and I really don't want them in Lavo, I'm gonna go with their lead down there, and I think they've done a good thing, but, uh, obviously, we got to have, I got legal counsel over here that don't wanna be in trouble with anything, so.
Yeah, like I said, we, we talked to the state attorney's office and all, and, you know, explained to them, you know, what we wanted to do, and, and they gave us a go-ahead, so we're, it, it, we're, I mean, basically, we're, I mean, we are going forward with, yes, sir.
Sounds good, that's, anybody else have any questions, Mr. or the sheriff on this?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the floor to public comment, I think our first speaker tonight will be Mr. Hancock, he's been quiet for a little bit, so he's got him a pretty good list, I believe. Welcome, sir.
Bo Hancock, sixty-one thirty-five Wiggins Road, Swanee County. Gentlemen, I just would like for y'all to start scheduling some workshops, there are some issues that I think y'all need to discuss, I don't think your regular meeting is, would be the proper venue because of the time constraints and getting in the information and everything together. A workshop is still a public meeting, public still can attend, but it's a more of an informal process to me. But y'all need to set some priorities, some goals, objectives, and do some planning on where you want the county to be. You cannot continue just to meet twice a month for your term in office if you don't know where you wanna get to. So if you can come together in a workshop, you don't have to have them every month, maybe every quarter, but pick your issues, because there's no follow-up, the public hears nothing on issues that y'all discuss here, or staff has directed to do something, a lot of times we never hear anything back, is what happened to it?
So you got...
You know, we don't get updates, for example, on the fire station, we, I know it's in the works, but we don't get an update on it.
That's what I was gonna ask, Mr. Hancock, I didn't mean to interrupt, but do you have some other items that's close to your heart that you would like for us to address, is what I'm saying? I mean, I understand, we got a lot of things to address, but I'm just saying some things that personally that you're thinking about, I'm just asking that question.
The solid waste issue is, is a good one. You know, if you, if it was known back in May, and, you know, there were some discussions that were going on, but why in heck wasn't a workshop scheduled then so y'all could get everything out, start planning for this? But, you know, that's one of the things, I think you need to have a discussion on leasing equipment or buying equipment, some equipment may, it may be more advantageous to the taxpayers to lease it, other equipment, we might be better off purchasing, but you need to sit down and discuss that. And sitting here, you know, for, in a two-hour meeting, you're not gonna get a whole heck of a lot done, 'cause you need time to discuss it back and forth, in a kinda, like I say, a workshop's a little more informal setting, but I think you need to do that. There's been talk about the need for another EOC building, there's been requests for state funding for that, what the heck's going on with that? Hadn't heard a word, but this has been going on for five years, now you're into your sixth year on a certain building out by the Coliseum, that maybe if Rick can get his grant this year, y'all might could do something with it, exhibition two, six years you've been putting money over there, and it's still, nothing's happened, 'cause nobody knows what the hell you wanna do, excuse me, y'all don't know what you wanna do. Plan, implement, whatever it is you're wanting to do, but these are things that need to come out, Mr. Harris needs to give a report, every meeting to bring everybody up to date, I know he doesn't wanna listen to, hear that, but, you know, at the last meeting, such-and-such was discussed, this is what we've gotten so far, or these projects have now been completed, you know, such-and-such a road was, DOT was paving it or resurfacing, that's now completed, you know, we never hear anything, and I don't ride every right road in the county, I don't know where they are, but it would be nice if I can spend my time to come up here, at least get some information, instead of me having to go up, other people are just as curious or wondering what's going on too. But that's all I'm asking, is schedule some workshops, do some planning, if not, I'm gonna start bringing in a can every meeting and see which one of y'all kick it the furthest, because that's what you're gonna end up doing or continuing to do. Any questions?
I think he's volunteering to be like a, a secretary-type, follow-up-type bookkeeper.
Putting it together.
Yeah, 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 I think he's volunteering for you, I mean, I'm, we could use one.
Trust me, you wouldn't want me to do that, because I will, I have, don't bother y'all, I don't call y'all unless it's, I really have something that's bugging the daylights out of me, or it's something I need to know, but I don't want to be in that position, first of all, you know, trying, 'cause I don't wanna be the one that's always gonna be the thorn in your side, but I will try, before you kick that can, I'll move the can and let you fall on your butt, you know, but do something, let's start moving forward and plan and organize for what we want to get done in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Have anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Moses, September one-four-five-eight-one, Hundred Second Path, Lavo, on the aircraft communities and those private, or those county-owned roads now, 'cause they, I totally wouldn't hear in seventy-nine, I was in Florida in seventy-nine, but, but I understand, somebody said that, that community gave y'all the, the private roads, well, I got a private road that I'll give you too if you maintain it for them, so my thoughts are, what's wrong with just giving that road back, and you don't have to worry about all these restrictions?
Mr. Pravat can answer that very clearly, 'cause I asked the same question.
And I've asked that in the past too, so.
Yes, sir, there's a certain provision when you're abandoning roads, and under that provision, you can't, if there's, inside a subdivision like that, there's a provision in the statute allows the homeowners' association to be able to take those roads back, but there's also three criteria that all have to be met by the subdivision, and the particular one, the others I haven't really looked into, but the particular one that Commissioner Land and I were addressing, they don't meet that criteria, so we couldn't give it back to them, you know, to be able to do that.
Would it be better for the interest of the county as a whole to help them meet that criteria, I mean, than go this way?
Well, I don't know that you're gonna be able to get the Hatfields and the McCoys to, together on that particular, those particular issues, you know.
I'll, I'll address it, and I'm, I've spoken to the HOA, and I have spoken with Hatfields and McCoys, so the problem lies wherein, let's just, and I don't know the number off the top of my head, let's just say there's a, let's just say there's fifty lots in that subdivision, well, in that subdivision, there is a homeowners' association, but they only have ten members, lot owners, that join the association, well, those ten, because the association mows and maintains the airstrip, well, those ten all have planes, the other, whatever number I said, the difference are not aviation enthusiasts, all they do is, they just happen to have a lot in there, or if the county decides, oh, we're gonna give these roads to you, well, they're gonna say, well, we don't have the money to maintain it, they were given to you in seventy-nine, you agreed to take them, and you've been maintaining them all this time, now you're, now you're just gonna walk away from me? I think that's the statute, that he's saying that you can't, you can't just quit, quit doing it.
All right, well, I'm just glad somebody thought of it, that feels good.
I have anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Seeing none, I'll close public comment at this time. Moving ahead to closing comments, Mr. Pravat, you have anything additional?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harris, anything additional?
I'll make it brief, Mr. Hancock got a little bit ahead of me this evening, but I was gonna tell you that we have finally paved one-hundred-seventy-fifth out there at the Catalyst site, that's been at least eight years in the making, what I'm waiting on now is the railroad to install their crossing and the signals out there, and once that's finished, we'll complete the striping and the ditch work, and that will be the southern entrance into the balance of the Catalyst site out there, so that's good news, and that's all I had.
Thank you. Mr. Harris? Mr. Watt?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Harris, where are we at on the chip selling, are we gonna do any this year, or is it gonna be next year?
Well, we've, actually, we started mobilizing, and we've got, I think it's forty-eighth is the number, north of I-ten on one-twenty-nine, it's up there ways on the east side of the road, so we plan to get back on that, providing we don't, in fact, I do not have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, or, excuse me, for Thursday to renew the LSE, so as long as we can get back into the business that we're typically in, we will start on that, and then we've got that list that the board approved previously, so we'll be working our way through that this year.
Is that something that has to be done when the temperature's hot, or can you do it during the winter?
The actual surface treatment needs to be done when it's warmer, but we've got plenty of work that needs to be done before, what we typically do is, we try to prepare two or three or four roads, get all the base work completed before we call and have them come in and do that, because they'll mobilize and come in and knock those things out in just a day or two, but it does need to be warmer, and hopefully that time of year it'll be drier as well.
That's a big issue.
Thank you, I saw one. Mr. Watt? Commissioner Fleming?
Mr. Chairman, I really don't have anything, I'm just glad to see that we're getting back to reform, because the past six, six months, I think, we've been, been working hard, the board has been working hard, and I said last week that our county attorney, our county administrator, county staff have, have been tremendous, and I failed to mention Keith the other day, he, him and Nina came and, and, you know, during our budget workshop, how they came and worked, I, I say this, we have, I put our county staff and personnel ahead of any county, I'm not living in other counties, but I'm saying what we're getting done, how things are accomplished, and, and I can always say that our, our people that work for the county, they, they do a very good job, and I put them among any group of county staff that's out here, just wanna let them know that, staff that, they do a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Land?
Um, I'll pick up where Mr. Fleming left off and just say that, you know, I appreciate this board, and I, I think that, back to the solid waste issue, that, that the public needs to know that there's, there's some commissioners up here that haven't, haven't accepted the answer of, you know, that's it, that's the best we can do on the solid waste on the contract, and there's, there's, there's several up here, well, all of us are, are looking at other options and are, and are chasing those rabbits and squirrels as hard as we possibly can, you know, it's, we can't always publicly talk about it, there'll be a time and a place to talk about it, but we're negotiating, as Mr. Harris said, and there's, there's some, a lot of work being done behind the scenes that, that we'll talk about publicly soon enough, I hope, to, to try to find the, the taxpayers a better deal and a, and a, and a long-term solution, so I, I just wanna thank the board for, for fighting, you know, digging in and getting to work, and, and with that, I, I do wanna let you guys know that I, I reached out and I have spoken with two of the top executives for our area with Century, and they are very interested in our, in our facility transfers, extremely interested, I believe, were their words, they have a good relationship with HCA, Lake City Medical Center, that's HCA owns Lake City Medical Center, Lake City, and they're very interested in, in sitting down to talk with us, and if, if the board elects to do so, I'll reach back out to them and get them over here to, to, to start talking about it, if that's something y'all wanna do, but that was something I was, you know, I had heard on the street and around that they, that they don't wanna come back, well, I just needed to hear it for myself, and that is not true, they are very interested, so I just wanna share that, share that with you guys, and again, just thank y'all for rolling up your sleeves and getting to work for these people.
Thank you. Commissioner Land? Commissioner Hale?
I'll just, kinda on the heels of that, I know Mr. Hancock was wanting us to have some more workshops and stuff, and I agree with you, Commissioner Land, some of the things that we work on, and also, we can't talk outside of the, the meetings and all here, but we, I'm sure every one of you, like myself, we're constantly wearing out Mr. Harris or other staff members trying to work on these things to, to get information to bring back to the board, I know I do it, and I know Commissioner Land's done, everyone's doing it, but you may be right, Mr. Bo, even if we just had maybe a, a way of updating, and not everyone's gonna come to a workshop, but maybe a, a website or something of that nature to update some of these things, and road, you mentioned road projects, we haven't had a lot of those, 'cause we haven't had much funding lately, but that's why you don't hear much of that, but we're all working on that as well, contacting our representatives and senators and folks at DOT, so I don't want you guys, I mean, I, I know that's not what you were insinuating, that we're not doing anything, because I know each and every one of us is working hard behind the scenes to try to make things happen for Swanee County, so, but we definitely could have at least a couple meetings a year, like you say, just to bring everybody up to speed, I wouldn't have a problem with that at all, so, and again, I, I try to say this every meeting too, I think Commissioner Fleming talked about it, with the rains we've had, the problems we've had, again, the staff, the road graders, the crews out there, I mean, they, they, they catch it on the chin sometimes, and they work tirelessly, and I understand it, and I was looking at the ball field the other day, Mr. Scott, I mean, everything with the rain we've had, you guys have done good keeping up with that, so I just appreciate all, everything, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Hale?
Yep.
I just, I mean, first and foremost, I wanna thank, as you mentioned, our road department for guys that's been working overtime for probably the past two months now, trying to get roads passable and, and also do what, just our regular maintenance of roads, I'm grateful to them, they need to, we're starting to get caught up here, hopefully they can get a break and spend some time with their families and loved ones, because they've sure been putting in for Swanee County, and I, I understand your frustration, Mr. Hancock, you don't see a lot of the things that goes on, as does a lot of the public doesn't see it, but, uh, trust me, there's a lot more that goes on around here. But, uh, trust me, there's a lot more that goes on around here than two meetings a month. For the past two months, it's been nothing but budget season, as we all know. You finally get that hammered out unless you get back and focus on other things. And then we had all the flood and rain, we had houses underwater. I mean, Commissioner Hale's had houses where we've been pumping water. We've had roads that was impassable to emergency vehicles. So, we're working. I, I know it's frustrating and you can't see it sometimes. And, uh, trust me, I don't wanna argue with anybody. I, I appreciate your comments and I, we can always do better. I do feel like we can have some type of update that, where we can say, I realize we just take it for granted because we call the office and we say, hey, and Mr. Harris or staff will say, well, we got that done. So, we're just thankful that we got it done, but we don't tell the public that we got it done such as you, where you would know that we got it done or people that's... So, can we do better with that? Absolutely. And we'll take that note and we'll try to work on it. Other than that, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Scott, Parks and Rec. He's got that splash pad that I asked the board to support us on and the board is gracious to do that. And that thing's 99% done and it's beautiful. It is gonna be an asset to this community and, uh, I just appreciate your diligence on that, seeing it through. Other than that, I think that's all. Yes, sir?
Uh, excuse me. Next, our next to last meeting that we had, Sister, Ms. Lawrence came before the board and I think she emailed us a, a poem. I would say, yeah, that poem. Just wanna let you know, we, I read it and I really appreciate you emailing it out. A lot of confidence in that.
Yep. I read it too.
Absolutely.
Yep. Very good. I don't have anything further, gentlemen. Just have a motion to adjourn. Have a motion by Commissioner Land, a second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same say aye. Motion carries.